Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's the specially convened session for February the 12th at four thirty. Ms. McGrew, will you go ahead and call the roll, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Roy Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockdick.
Here.
Councilmember Dusty Field.
Here.
You have a corn.
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Councilwoman, Councilmember Jennifer Stockdick. She will offer our invocation. Following that, Councilman Roy Robertson will lead us in the U.S. pledge and the pledge to the Texas flag. Jennifer?
Sure. Let us pray. Lord, I just want to lift up all of our local leaders to you today. Lord, I pray for the mayor, our city council, our county commissioners, our judges, police, fire, and just anyone that serves our local community. Lord, strengthen us with wisdom and grace and discernment as we make the decisions, the really the best decisions for our city. Lord, I ask just for a hedge of protection over us in the next week, over our community as we have this bad weather coming in. Lord, keep our families, our homes, our businesses, and our animals safe. Father God, I just lift all these things up to you, and I ask these in your precious holy name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Jennifer. Rory?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag.
Flag. I pledge allegiance to the.
Texas state.
State.
Done.
One and indivisible.
Thank you, Rory. We'll move on to item number three on the agenda, public comments. I'd like to remind the audience that they will have three minutes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. And if you wish to speak via teleconference, please press star nine to raise your hand, and Ms. McGrew will let you in.
Seeing none at this time, ma'am.
Okay, we will move on to item number four. Comments from the public on any item on the agenda. Once again, if you wish to speak via teleconference, please press star nine, to raise your hand, and Ms. McGrew will let you in. And when you speak, please give your name and your address, and this is strictly just for our records.
Seeing none at this time, ma'am.
All right, we will move on to agenda item number five. Number five, May first, 2021 election. Consider an ordinance calling for the 2021 general officers election, electing one council member from Ward A, one council member from Ward B. And these are three-year terms. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. An ordinance calling election in the city of Katy, Texas for the first day of May 2021 for the purpose of electing one council member from Ward A and one council member from Ward B and other matters relating to said election.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Stockdick and second by Councilmember Field. Is there any discussion? Having none, what?
I would like to let council know at this time that we will be utilizing the Katy Civic Center for early voting and Election Day for Ward A.
Okay, thank you, Becky. Is there any discussion? Having none, we will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Item number five B, the 2021 bond election. Considering an ordinance calling for a 2021 bond election. Ms. McGrew, can you read that caption, please, ma'am?
Yes, an ordinance calling a bond election.
That's it?
I know, it's the best one.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Chris Harris, second by Jennifer Stockdick.
That was Janet, yeah.
Yes, I think, uh, you have any presentation at this time, Becky?
Yes, I believe Lindsay's been promoted to share her screen, and they are promoting Lauren at this time as well.
Okay. Okay, council, real quick. I know we've had opportunity to meet individually to discuss the 2021 bond election. And we will just kind of go through the presentation. If you have questions, feel free to stop at any time, and we'll go. Are we ready? Okay. I know everybody's kind of seen this, this caption. I want to kind of walk through the numbers again. If you can remember that when we were discussing, we wanted the three things that really help us when we want to sell bonds. And one is, is that we have a good fund balance in our debt reserve, which, if you look at the first column, first column's a year, but if you look, you'll see the beginning balance is 1.3 million dollars. And with that, that is a very healthy fund balance for debt service. The second thing is, is we want to be able to always have AAA paper, which we are rated AAA. And then the third is that we want to make sure we can do a 15-year direct placement that ensures us the best interest rates. So we have the three things that will allow us to have the lowest debt interest when we go for bonds. So what we're wanting to do now is we're wanting to take council through what our capacity is. Now, Monday night, you passed a $3 million bond, series 2021A. Okay? So we felt at that time, you got to have value in order to sell bonds. So if you look at the second column or third column where it says prior year taxable AV, you will see where we went from 2.4 billion, 2.6 billion, and 3. almost 2 billion for an 18% increase. That's true value. That is all the economic development we've been doing to try to get the Amazons, Costco's, Buc-E's. American furniture has not hit yet. They will be coming. But all the value of the new homes that have been put on the ground. So we're doing a pretty fantastic job of getting good value on the ground. Now, with that, of course, when we start talking about future, we always want to go conservative. The 18 is a true number. But if you look after that, we just put in a 3% growth for two years and then a non-growth for an extra two years. And we'll see where we're at, and I'll show you why that, why that matters. If you then look at the current capacity that we feel we could do in a 2021B. Circle that one, Lindsay. In a 2022, which would be a July 1st, 2021, and a February 1, 2022, that capacity adds up to 6 million. So we're comfortable with saying our bond capacity is 6 million from 2021, 2022. We will then look at 2023, May of 2023. If the $5 million is there, we will then put in our, whatever we have in our CIP program, we'll be going for, for bonds at that time. So with that, I want everybody to remember you've got $6 million right now to be able to go to the voters. And these are some of the things that we have on our CIP list to bring forth. So our bond proposal is 6 million. Proposition A is for public safety at 1.8. Proposition B is a proposition for parks at 4.2 million. Let me go ahead and break that down a little bit further. So Prop A, Prop A is for the construction of improvements to municipal public buildings, including reimbursement of expenses for Fire Station Number One rehabilitation. Because remember, we're doing that now, so we're going to ask for reimbursement. The second is the construction of a training tower. The third is the expansion of the city's fleet maintenance facility so we can work on these fire apparatus. And then the refurbishing of the existing police facility because it's in, it's in dire, dire need of repair in, in some of the interior areas of the police station. So with that, in Prop A, we've got the reimbursement for expenses at Fire Station Number One, the construction of a training tower for the Katy Fire Department, and the expansion of the city fleet facility. You see how they're trying to work on the truck now with actually no equipment? It's just sitting in an open bay. So we want to really convert that into something that we can use to work on the fire apparatus. And then, of course, the renovations of Katy Police Department facilities. So that is Proposition A, and how it breaks down is the reimbursement for expenses at Fire Station Number One is 800,000. Construction of the training tower is 100,000. The expansion of the fleet maintenance facility is 100,000. The renovations of Katy PD facility is 800,000 for a $1.8 million Proposition A to go to the voters in May. Questions?
Byron, on the reimbursement from the fire station, on those expenses that we get back, then we could turn around out of our general fund if we need to buy a, a fire truck or other apparatus for Fire Department, correct?
We could, yes, you could. Once it, once it comes back into general fund, you can repurpose it for, for something in other public safety. So you could do it, you could do it for a pumper truck, you could do it for police style hoes. You could, you know, just that money would be available for you to decide where to best put that fit.
Hey Byron, I have a question.
Yep.
When I met with you on Monday, I thought that, I thought that part of the money from that was for the purchase.
Well, right now, what, what we've had is, is bond council has come back and said that, that a fire truck, we couldn't bond for a fire truck.
Okay.
But we can bond for.
My question with you on Monday, I wasn't sure that that could be in the bond. Okay.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Byron, I've got a question. Could we, on the purchase of the fire truck, do we have that in as a capital improvement project? Or can you not put large equipment into a capital improvement?
No, it, it's in there. If, if it's not, if it's, if it's not on this, in this bond package, it's on Andy's list.
Okay.
Well, Andy's got a list. I mean, his list is about 1 million, if not more, Andy, I think you got a 1.5. You're muted. You're muted. Andy.
Andy, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because what, what you're approving today is just a funding mechanism for what's on that list. The capital improvement plan is an inventory of all the projects we want to do over the next five years. It's a moving target. It's, you can add, you can add projects to it as we think of them. And that's how we pick these items off for, by priority and determine how we're going to fund them. So and you, you saw based on what Byron just presented that we have opportunity in the near future to bond again.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, now Byron, as far as the CIP, I kind of feel like this is our first step in actually putting it into effect because these items are on our, our CIP. Is that correct?
Right. This is our first, this is kind of the first opportunity we've had to sell bonds other than drainage bonds to, for city facilities and, and, you know, some of the things that we wanted to have on that CIP program.
Yeah, I want to add also that your council approved a new CIP tool that we will be using soon, and so all these projects will be visible to all the staff, council, and in the public especially on, on the website.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the expansion of city fleet maintenance, that's so we can work on the vehicles ourselves, is that correct? So we're not having to contract out or, or move out to?
Correct. Correct. Right now, we can do, we can do like right there, they're probably, I'm not sure exactly what they're doing, but it, it's something minor where when we put some equipment in there and get this thing kind of where we can work on, you know, our mechanics feel like they can do a lot more, but we just don't have the, the bay to do it. So they're going to build that bay so then we can start working on it and not have to send it out every time that we need to do an oil change. Or, or something, you know, we could do in-house.
Dusty, are you done?
Yes, I am, Janet. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That building where the bays, is that located over there by Public Works?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that is used for all of our vehicles and equipment, not just for repairing the fire trucks, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, just Councilmember Robertson and myself were out there just a couple of months ago, and I, I think he can probably attest to how confined.
Yeah.
They could use some room. Councilman Harris and I, we took a tour out there with Elaine, and we toured the whole facility, and they're working fixing up the trucks, saving tons of money doing it that way. So I definitely agree, they need more room. The, the bays fit the smaller vehicles. So we need something where they can actually work on the larger vehicles such as a fire truck without having to work outdoors in the extreme elements like we're going to have next week.
Is there any further discussion?
Not for me.
Okay, Prop Two. Prop Two is, um, hang on one second, let me move my. Okay. Prop Two, Prop Two for the construction of city park improvements, including a hike and bike trail system and the construction of a Parks Administration building. For years and years, we've been talking about the connectivity, a safe way to connect our citizens to downtown. Right now, if they try to go down Avenue D, that's pretty, that's a pretty, you know, busy type of a street. Where we've been looking at this on the bayou side, that would say we could get hike and bike trails along the bayou and provide safe connectivity from First Street to the Ponds and Pitts Road. So that is here, where you've got a trail system that pretty much connects subdivisions all the way up to the ponds at Pitts. That way, if someone like a family wanted to, to come down out of Falls Green Meadows, Kane Island, West Katy, even Whispering Lakes, Womack, Fawn Lakes, we'd have a system designed that people could actually come down safely down the bayou into Thomas Park, have a pedestrian crossing on Third Street, and get people into the downtown area. Because, you know, we've been, we've been doing a lot of work downtown. Really want to start getting this thing activated, and we really want to be able to have people have mobility to get up and down, you know, instead of using Avenue D. So, you know, I know this has been talked about for years and years. So, you know, I, I think we have an opportunity to really do it now that we have the, the mass, right? We have the population of subdivisions. You want to be able to have some type of connectivity. So that one is there, and then we got to get a new Parks Administration building. So what we're doing on Proposition B is a construction of a Parks Administration building. So this is our current building we have out there. How we're going to, how we're going to look at it is we're going to either have to tear down and rebuild or somehow maybe we could repurpose a little bit of that building for some type of maybe a, a storage or something that we could utilize. But that is the area that we're zoning in and saying, if we could have a Parks building there, I could take all the Parks guys from Public Works and move them out of there, move their equipment out of there and have them on site at Katy City Park, our biggest and most used park. So that's kind of the, the area that we want to put the new administration building. So that's Proposition B, hike and bike trail system. It's estimated of about $4 million. And the Parks Administration building is approximately $200,000, but we also have budgeted money if, if we need more money for that building. So any questions on Prop Two? Or Prop B, sorry? Yes, ma'am. You want me?
I don't really have a question. I just want to say that I'm so excited to see this bike and hike trail. When I was campaigning a couple of years ago, I met a young man by the name of James Spring that presented the community pathways to me, and I was so excited about it. A year later, the mayor met, met him. He was excited about it. And you're right, this has been, we've been talking about this for a long time, even, even before I was on council. And I think this is something that our, our residents have really been asking for. Especially with COVID, they want to be able to get outside more. And I also, along with this, I want to give a shout out to former Mayor Doyle Callender because he gave me some advice on it, and also David Frishman. He's been really keeping me encouraged and sending me ideas and stuff from about what they're doing down in Houston at the Bio Park stuff. So I'm excited to see this. I know it's going to take a long time to, to get it accomplished, but it's a start, and I think it's going to be great. One last comment I want to make before I forget. Byron, just in the past, just because we approve or, or we approve these bonds, doesn't mean we're going to go out and actually sell all 4.2 million at the same time. We can sell it. We can piece it out, can't we, like per project or?
We have it. Correct. Now, if you, if, Lindsay, if you go back to that first screen, it showed how we're going to, how we're going to actually sell the bonds. Remember now, we're going to do, we're going to go to voters first, okay? So the first thing we've got to do is voters have to agree that this is, this is what they would like to see us move forward with. And as soon as that happens, then we would have a, like I said, we have a July 1st, 2021B for 2.5 million dollars. What that would do is that would start the administration, Parks Administration building, but it would also then fund all public safety and then fund the design of the trail system. Then we would come back in, in February of 2022, and we would sell the 3.5 million dollars to do the trail system.
Okay.
Then after that, we would then be probably in October of 2022, we would be in another bond situation of what does our next bond look like to go to the voters? So you would have a, you'd have a sale, you know, July 1, you'd have a sale February 1, 2022. And then in October 2022, you'd be looking out at 2023 to 2025. So now, now what we're doing is we're using that CIP program as it's designed to do. Let's, let's look at things three years out, five years out. And then, and we bond as we go. As our needs dictate what we need, we bond as we, as we go.
So what is this going to do to our overall debt and the ability to pay that overall debt?
Well, I mean, if you look in column 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, where it says a tax rate, you had a 10 cent tax rate. We just dropped it down to eight. We think, I told them to get it back, you know, bring it back to 10, but we're not looking at, at our tax rate having to go up. We're still, 44 cents is still what we're targeting. So we're still trying to just stay with, with that 44 cents. And, you know, we feel we can do that. Because of value, there's value we're going to be bringing in. Current value is going to, you know, help us sustain that 10 cents, and then we can use the rest for our maintenance and operation.
Yeah.
Byron, first of all, I'm glad we finally have brought this forward. I know we've talked about this for, for several years, and I remember at our first strategic planning, talking about ways to activate Thomas Park and what is Rylandrew Park. And now we have a way to connect downtown with those parks and a heritage park and all the way up north. Waller County is going to be putting a new park up around our detention pond area. So this would be a great way to get everybody hiking and biking and outdoors. So I, I look at this as something that's great 20 years from now and, you know, for the next generation. So very happy we're going forward with this. Now, have we been in, with Berkshire-Katy Drainage District, what, what conversations have we had with them?
We've had conversations with them. They have understood that as long as they can maintain, that's the biggest thing for them, is that, you know, we make sure that our slopes are, are good for their equipment so they get their equipment through there so they can maintain the, the, how you call it, the bayou, okay? So we've had conversations with them. They're on board with it, and, you know, we're, we're going to have to all, we're going to have to all get in a room together, and we're going to have to figure it out. The engineer is going to have to get it designed up, you know, exactly how, what the best way to get this thing done is. And then to make sure we're always conscious that Berkshire-Katy Drainage District has to be able to get their equipment through there.
Right. Okay, and then will there be a crosswalk? Or have we thought about how to cross people from, to downtown to the Rylandrew property area?
So we have had, we've been in discussions with, with the engineer on, on a high level. They feel like a pedestrian crossing right there with a, with a red light would probably be the safest way. A person would come up, push the light. It's far enough away from Highway 90, you know, to where people could see that light turning yellow and then turn red. People would then be able to walk across, and then we would take them into our downtown.
Okay, great. And I know you just explained it to Janet, but just say it again. On our tax rate, we, we're, we're planning for 44 cents even with passage of these bonds?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, Byron. First, and I know Janet sort of addresses, is there a time schedule that we're looking at, at least beginning the construction?
To, for the hike and bike trail?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go and, we'll go and design, okay? And then once we go for, to design, then we'll go for a, that 2022 sale is, is when we're going to, that February 1, we're hoping to have everything teed up, ready to go, and then get out for, for a contractor and hopefully start it in that 2022 summer range. And how long will it, how long will it take to complete?
Right.
You know, it, I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to get better estimates on that. But, you know, it, it can be, you know, we could start it in two directions. We could start it from the ponds and from Thomas Park and try to meet in the middle. Or we could just go from Thomas Park to 10th Street, 10th Street to Franz, Franz to, to Martin, and then, you know, that way. So I'm going to kind of leave it up to them in design and tell us what the best way to finish it in. And to give us recommendations.
And you may have addressed this, is it going to be on the east side or the west side? Or is it going to be on both sides of the?
So it's going to be on, it'll be on one side, but some of it will be on the east side and some of it will flip to the west side. And I, and I know that, I know that because of the design I've seen. And I, and I know that, I know that because of the design I've seen so far with, Tenth Street is a good crossover, okay? Franz is a good crossover. And then you might have to put one more crossing between Franz and Morton, because that's a pretty long distance. But the trail will always be on one side.
And will this affect drainage whatsoever?
Well, that's why we've got Costello on it, uh, our, our, you know, drainage engineers, so it should not have, it should not have an effect at all, because it's a flat surface, you know, stretching up from Thomas Park to, to Pitts. But we'll, we'll make sure the engineers sign off on the drainage side.
All right, that's it.
Byron, I had a couple of comments and a question, if you don't mind. First of all, like I said, uh, coming from the finance side of it, that I understand, um, I think it's a real testament to the city and how good they've managed money over the last, I've seen the balance sheet. The balance sheet of the city looks phenomenal. Um, keeping a triple A rating is very important for growth and structure without having to waste so much of our money on interest rates. Right now, the interest rates are bottom. I mean, they're, they're so low, this is the time to do any type of growth projects. I'm very excited about this hike and bike trail. Um, so like I said, good job, I'm excited about it. Now, what's the, what's the, do you have a total distance?
Well, I think somewhere between, from what they're telling me, and they have to, you know, it kind of curves a little bit, but I'm thinking it's, it's three miles or more up and back. But you gotta really think about what we're doing at the ponds too, because the ponds are gonna increase the mileage.
Okay.
We could, we could have a four and a half, five mile, you know, thing when we're all done. Because if you just notice, I, we had it going just to the ponds, but at the ponds, you know, we, we've got some plans up there too.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that's even better. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, hang on one, hang on one, hang on one second. Okay, I think we're, yeah, summary, okay, I see. I wouldn't see, somehow I wasn't seeing the, the, the summary page. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
So one, one final thing, just to reiterate for, um, the residents that are listening, what we're, we are not voting on these bonds per se. We are voting to put these bonds on the May ballot. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to item number five, B, one, one. Consider a resolution declaring intention to reimburse project expenditures. This is concerning power station number one, the rehabilitation aspect of it. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, the second motion was by Harris, second by Janet Court. Is there any discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one Charter Review Commission. This is consideration of acceptance of the final report. We will now accept the final report from the Charter Review Commission.
Mayor, if you may, can you, Becky, is, is the chairman there? Can you allow the?
I see the vice chairman on the call. Do you want me to have Mike promoted?
Yes.
Mike, I show you've been promoted. You should be able to unmute yourself at this time.
And, and it wanted to know, the council wanted to know, Mr. Vice Chair, if you had any additional comments other than, than the report? Can mute, Mike, don't mute.
There we go. I would like to make one additional comment. This is the most thorough. I've, I've had the privilege to serve on this committee several times, and this is the most thorough going over that, that we've ever had. We went over it almost word by word. Uh, I'd like to thank the other commissioners on it as well, and a special thanks to the, to the, the chairman. He did a very good and thorough job. And we appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of Katy.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Harris, second by Court. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, real quick, on number eleven on term of city administrator, it has beyond six months from the end of the mayor's term. Uh, I know, I respect the Charter Review Commission, I think they did a great job, but could we change that to one hundred and eighty days past the mayor's term? Because nowhere else in the charter do we have it worded like six months. We always have the days specified.
Yes, yes, sir. And one of the things that you could do that is that after you accept this report, if you accept the report, it would be as the wording is now. After that, before you get ready, the next item would be the call of election. At that point, council member, then you can make the recommendation for those, those changes. That would be the appropriate time for those changes and any other changes that the council would, would like to see, would, would you would accept the report from the, from the commission, and then any changes that you, or any additions, deletions, or if you, whether or not you want there to be an election, you get, you get to decide that at that point.
So does that mean we can't have any type of discussion right now?
You, you can, you, you can discuss the report, but you will not make recommendations to the report. You, your job is to make recommendations to the, to whether or not you're gonna put it on for an election, and if you are, what language to be on, on the election. This is just them sending their report to you.
Okay.
Now, after that, you, you can't have any discussion, any changes that you want to after the, the report.
Okay, but, so I can't ask any questions at this point. I have to wait till the next?
You can ask questions about the report, yes.
Yeah.
If you have questions about the report, you can ask about the report. If you have questions or concerns about, about, uh, changes that you would like to see made or, or anything like that, then you make that after you receive their report.
Okay, because I have questions I don't know that I necessarily want to change, but I have some questions for my own understanding.
Okay, regarding the report or regarding, uh, an item that's, that's, that's in the report, what?
An item in the charter, an item in the charter.
Okay, then, then that would come, that would come after.
Okay.
That would come after.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, my first time involved in a charter review, so.
I'll make the motion to accept the report.
A second.
Motion by Harris, seconded by Councilman Stocknick. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six B, consider an ordinance calling charter amendment election. Ms. McGrue, can you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance calling a special election to approve amendments to the Katy Home World Charter to be held at the same time as the regular city officers' election, Saturday, May first, twenty twenty one.
Like, okay, now. Do what, Art? Well, well, if, if you want to have, have discussion before that, now, now would be appropriate, or you could wait until, till after there's a, a, a second on it. It just depends on how you want to do that.
I'll, I'll make the.
So what are you motioning on?
To call a charter. Um, I'm making a motion to call a charter election.
Election, okay.
Okay.
Now we need a second.
Second. Okay, second.
Motion made by Harris, seconded by Janet Court. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, there we go.
You want to restate yours?
Okay, but, back to number eleven, uh, just changing the terminology, just changing six months to one hundred and eighty days on number eleven. It just matches other places in the charter where it specifies the exact number of days.
Becky, can we get somebody to share that screen?
And I, I had a different idea.
Okay.
Same topic.
Yes, if, if we can, we're gonna get, get them to share the screen, so you'll see what the language is. Okay, and so, so would, would, would you, would, uh, your motion would include changing that six months to say one hundred and eighty days?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I have a, a question. It's not really a motion, I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, could we not tie it to the start of the fiscal year? Because six months kind of puts it out in the middle of November, and since the fiscal year starts November one.
Well, that was, that, that was a, a, a long discussion with, with the Charter Commission, but what they looked at is that if you tied to the fiscal year like it was tied to it, that could, that could make that term. Uh, if, if the mayor were to die in January, then if you go to fiscal year, you keep that administrator all the way until September. And a new mayor or a subsequent mayor that's elected may not want them to, to be that long in that administration. That's why the discussion was, and they, they came to the agreement that it would be six months from the end of the mayor's term. But, but you as a council, you can decide to, to send that language back, which is what it, it, uh, basically used to say. You, you, you could decide to, to leave that, leave that language in there.
I just, but, I mean, um, between what we have now and, and, and what we're looking at, um, what's really the bottom line difference?
Well, well, right.
The bottom line difference is that the, the city administrator is, is a mayor appointee and deals with the, uh, is, follows the mayor. Right now, the, the current language would say that, that he filed that six months after the term of the mayor is, is how long the city administrator gets to stay in office. That six months could occur at any point, depending on when, when a mayor leaves. So it could be from six months from January, or it could be six months, six months from, from May or six months from April, but no later than the end of the fiscal year. And, and, and what, what the idea of the city administrator under our former government is that the, it's city administrator administers on behalf of the mayor. So you wanted the city administrator to be administering on behalf of the mayor on which they're serving on.
Okay.
But Art, correct me if I'm wrong, this would also give the city administrator, if a new mayor came in and did not like Mr. Abear, that would give Mr. Abear six months to not only find another job, but to bring the new city administrator up to speed. Is that correct?
Yes, 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 because if you look at the next, next sentence down, the, that city administrator can only be, can only be terminated for cause. So that, so that does give them that, that time where they couldn't come in, the, the new mayor, Art Pertow, couldn't come in and say, hey, bear, you, you out of here right now unless, unless we've contracted for that. Yeah, but under the charter, they wouldn't be able to say that. Most time you're gonna have a, have a contract manager that's gonna say, yeah, you can leave for any and no reason, but you gotta pay them out of it. But without a separate contract language in there, yes, they would have six months to, to find a, another job.
That almost sounds like you were throwing your hat in the ring, Art.
Yeah. No, no, I love my house. I love my house, and, and I'm, I'm in the ETG.
Okay.
And, and of course, this has nothing to do with any, uh, current employees or any, uh, current appointees. Just, uh, it, it goes along with our, uh, former government that we have, and I think clarifying it, we're one hundred and eighty days after any mayor, they could keep the same city administrator, or it gives you some transition time.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, correct me, Art, again, Art, if I'm wrong, a motion by Chris Harris to change the wording from six months to a hundred and eighty days.
Yes, yes.
And you get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Chris Harris, seconded by Councilman Dustin Field. Is there any further discussion on it?
On that particular item or on the charter in general?
Just that item.
On that item.
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'll, uh, go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Councilman Harris's motion passes. Further discussion?
I've got, I've got a question. On, um, Article four, Section four, on vacancy of a council member?
What, numbers?
It's Article four, Section four vacancy. Um, I noticed that we pulled the section that stated not more than one appointee um, within a twelve month period. Why, why did we pull that out? I mean, that, that leaves it wide open for multiple, uh, appointments.
I don't, let me, let me see it, council member, so I can understand what.
It's number six.
Number six. Oh.
Yes, yeah, number six. Uh, because what, what we do is just, we made sure that, that it complied with Article eleven, Section eleven of, of the Constitution. Where is the language that, that you're, you're concerned about, council member?
Um, where we had that, um, down, further downward, it says, it's scratched out and red, provided however, the city council shall not appoint more than one council member in any twelve month period.
The, the, the Constitution prohibits you from, from, from doing that. You have to have an election.
Because our terms changed.
Okay, okay, so.
You, you, you could not, you could not appoint somebody, and then somebody dies and appoint somebody else within like that twelve month period and not have an election. You have to, you have to have an election. You can't have two appointments, you have to have an election.
Okay.
If you.
And so.
Okay.
And that's covered by the Texas Constitution.
Yes, yes, ma'am. If for, for those, we good.
And, and Art, right, the, on, on the timing, since our, our terms come up at different rotations, you, if anybody had more than a year left on the term and the vacancy occurred, the Constitution requires the election.
Yes, yes, there, there, and it requires it within a hundred and twenty days. So, so you have, you have to have one, uh, ever since we went to, went to, uh, a three year, three year terms, then if you got a vacancy and there's more than twelve months, twelve months or more on there, more than twelve months, you have to have an election under the Constitution.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm good.
Any other discussion?
Um, yeah, I have another, um, question. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't know the numbers, what y'all were going by, but there was an article, and I'm just curious, Article ten taxation, there was a whole lot pulled out of that, that section. I'm just curious why.
Because it, it's, it's no longer, no longer viable under, under our, our, our current system. The, all the language about the way we, the way we tax and our tax method, none, none of that, none of that currently do we, can we do.
Okay.
So that's, well, what about the last charter amendment we had? You saw on there, we had to remove all that language about the border equalization. This, this comes right behind that to, to take all, all of this taxation, property tax language out also, and we have to do it in accordance with, with state statute.
Okay, okay. Um, my next question, and, and again, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize to write down the. Um, my next question, and, and again, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize to write down the numbers. Um, I've got a section seventeen submission of charter to voters. And I didn't quite get my answer down, so if we could go down there, there was something about that, that.
Oh, at the very bottom, I believe. I believe what, that, that whole.
I was, I was just going down in order.
Yeah, I think you may be at the very end. All of that language there, that's, that's for the, for the first charter.
Okay, okay. So we're not, we're not changing, I mean, the charter's still going to go to the voters.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yes, this amendment had to go and all that has to go. This is just for that, for the first charter.
Okay, and my, my last question is, is on article six, the fire department. And I'm just curious why that is written so, so differently from, um, the police department? Because in the police department, it talks about the appointment of, of the police chief. Well, the process for appointing the fire chief, isn't it the, the same? I'm, I'm just curious why it's so vastly different.
No, no, I don't think that was, there wasn't, I don't think we recommended any, any changes in that, in that section. And that's just the way that the, that, that the charter has it, so we didn't recommend. In, in, you can, you can take a look at that and, and as, as a council you can, but I think the commission, they didn't, didn't look into that. They just, just took, uh, there was no, no change, so they didn't make any changes. But Becky, can we move to that, move to those sections and so that the council can take a look at it? It, it's not going to be in this, we got to go to.
I'm going to be.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up.
Chris, Chris Harris, come from Harris.
Yes.
I walked around.
I saw your pants.
So I, I, I'm just curious why it's so different. I, I mean, I know that the charter didn't change anything, but, um, I guess I'm asking. I, it's probably too late for this time, but shouldn't that?
No, 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 ma'am, this is the time, this is the time when, when you, if you want to make a change, now is the time to, to, to make it.
Is it because it originally started as a volunteer fire department?
Yes, yes, uh-huh, and, and that's why I want to see what's, originally, there was only one person in the, in the fire department. Just one, because everybody else was volunteers.
Okay, can we scroll?
You don't, go ahead.
Can we scroll back and look at how, um, uh, PD is set up? So they're talking about, talking about how the chief of police is, uh, appointed, approval with the mayor. I mean, shouldn't we have similar wording like that for the, for the fire chief and, um?
Doesn't the ordinance capture that, Art?
Yes, see, and what, what happens is, is that, is that in this one, that's, that one was set apart. If you go through, go through the, the, uh, the provision in the charter deals with the mayor and the mayor's authority for department here, the, the mayor, his, his, uh, his authority captures all of that. Jan, all of the. All of the departments of, of, of the city, all of the departments.
Wait, wait, I got multiple people talking.
That's Abear. Go ahead, Art. All right, all of, all of the departments of the city, they report to the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
And so, 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 so that, that language, you're going to have language that regardless of, of, if they're added additionally into the charter, you still go to the provision that those departments are, are appointed and, and are under the mayor. See, if you look under three, under, under six, and then you go B, and you, you go three, that all of, all of those departments, they're all, all under him.
Well, and I, I, I understood that. I wasn't questioning that. I was just, to me, it just looked strange that we had two departments that are kind of structured similar, similar, similarly that. And, um, but, but it was written very different. That, that's just what caught my eye.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and, and one thing, we can, we can take a look at that, and, and the reason behind that is because our fire department, as you see it today, is, is a one eighty from what it was twenty years ago or even fifteen years ago. Because we used to be, we used to be a, a volunteer fire department. We went from a volunteer, volunteer fire department with a police chief that was, that was appointed by the city to a mixed department, which had, had a police chief and what's called duty crew. Those are other full, fully paid firefighters to now our department, we are a fully paid fire department with some, some volunteers, but I don't even think we use volunteers anymore. So our, our department has changed. So that may be something that we may need to look at in this language, uh, as a, as an amendment, but, but we, uh, we just didn't, didn't look at it, and the committee didn't look to make that change. But you can make the change if you choose to.
If I remember right, Art, when they discussed it in twenty seventeen too, the discussion was that since it's easier for council to amend an ordinance, that they would leave the ordinance controlling and not the charter.
Yeah, be- because if you look at the language, you could have both paid or volunteer firefighters, so, so there wasn't any.
So, so what you're telling me is that the fire department is really more defined or controlled, however you want to, whatever word you want to use, by an ordinance versus the charter.
Correct. Correct.
And that ordinance is referenced in here or not? No?
No, no.
Okay, do we know what that ordinance number is?
You can, they can, they, they can get that for, for you. Uh, I think Becky, I think we got it. Can you scroll down? I think we may mention, I think we may have, have part of that code of ordinance that got to fire department in there, but we know we have the one where the fire chief is, uh, appointed. Yeah, there it is, section six.
See, I don't see the actual ordinance reference, because it wouldn't have changed this code of ordinances, so the codifier wouldn't have listed it.
But see if, see if in our, in our code, uh, search in the code to see if, see if what language we, we have there. Other than in here, other than in the charter.
Just search.
Because some of the other departments have. Yeah, I'm looking under chapter five, Becky. See, chapter five, that, that normally where firefighting stuff is. See, I think this, this language is going to have what, what fire, fire department does. Yeah, there you go. And it, 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 it does that. I know, I thought it was five, not getting as old as it. So you do have an ordinance that, that was it.
I hate to tell our old memories, but we voted on that in August of twenty eighteen, so.
I've slept a few, I, how many things have we gone through since twenty eighteen?
Yeah, and I think that, that's when y'all made a lot of the updates from volunteer to full-time fire department.
Right.
Okay, okay, it just, um, I was looking at the charter. I thought the charter was the charter and the ordinance was the ordinance and.
You should have asked me.
I didn't think about it until just before the meeting.
It's, it's just for, and for the council's sake, is that your, your, your charter is your constitution, then your ordinances are your laws. So you, you do general, general with your constitution, and then you have laws to enact that, so.
Okay, I never thought of it that way. That's a, that, that's a negative like. Okay, I am done.
If you want to black out your screen, you can slap Chris real quick.
Thank you, Bill, mayor.
No, no, go ahead and, uh, there's no more discussion. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'd like to make one announcement, and that is if anyone, whether it be council or public, has any questions following this meeting, you can email the city secretary's office at citiesecretary@cityofkaty.com. So any questions that anybody may have, please email Becky those questions, and we will make sure they are responded to. Nothing further. We will go ahead and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Janet Court, second by Jennifer Stocknick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and we will go ahead and close this meeting at five thirty-two.
Y'all stay warm.
Y'all all have a wonderful weekend. Stay warm and dry.
Y'all too. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.